They were good going, didn't they?
I think you're on the inside here. That's the first one.
There's one.
There's one.
Yeah, you're up there.
You're all right, Mr. Concolino? Let's go ahead and back it up here to one.
Well, Robert's loading that and getting to the first pitch. Thank you for having us back. First start by saying, "Go Dawgs." Congratulations. You ended in playoffs.
It's kind of tough for the boy there.
Actually, from New York, but... So, he asked us to come and kind of do a brief overview. Where we started, where we are now, how we got from point A to point B. Brief overview and everything in between. As far as wayfinding goes, it's... And especially wayfinding through a city, it's just to be welcoming somebody in. It's just giving somebody comfort traversing through your city. The ease of ingress and egress, letting them know where to go, how to get to where they need to go. You guys have a very nice meal ticket right down the road with the fairgrounds and agribusiness center. And the last thing we want to do is kind of let those people get away. We want them to stay here in Perry. We want them to be able to traverse here in Perry, get to downtown from the fairgrounds and back, be able to commute around town very easily knowing where things are. So, that's the thought process of how we're starting. So, we flip to the next slide, please. So, three things that you, though, that we noticed with the city of Perry. Your entrance identification signage wasn't very cohesive. We have mainly one welcome to Perry sign, which is downtown. I believe it's on the corner of Commerce and Macon Road. The brick facade and the brass cloud outletters. You also have the brick pillar and fence panel sign right at the road here. Washington Street, all of them. Aside from those, your entrance signs are those DOT style U-channel. Welcome to Perry with the steeple, which is with steeple. Welcome on them. Some of those locations are a bit hard to recognize, point out. Obviously, you can see on the map right there. Your incorporated area is not typical of most places. It's kind of patchy. That's the word I was looking for. So, you have these DOT sign and outlining areas for your tertiary and secondary entrances that might not be noticeable for people traversing through the city. Additionally, your directional signage are a lack there. Driving around the city, we had maybe noticed three, four, and five of the most directional signs. And some of the messaging that those signs are directing you toward to were not necessarily things that you want to direct people to that work outside of the city of Perry. Those messages were more kind of directed at the popular population, as you can see proper. You're going to the Board of Education. I don't know who's going to be going to your fairgrounds for some event. It's going to want to stop by the Board of Education on their way into downtown. There's some inadequacies or inconsistencies in the messaging. There is the park identification, gives a sense of place, people to go hang out, things like that. Again, you notice some inconsistencies with the messaging that was presented or how it was presented. For example, you have Frank Rose's park, which has kind of the brick entrance sign. And then, Bobby Calhoun, you have a post-it pad with three pieces going across it. Things like that, just kind of point out. Flip through here. As you can see... As I was alluding to, downtown, you have the Welcome to Perry. Here's your Welcome to Perry coming into downtown Perry at the road. Here's your secondary or tertiary signs. So, try to address this and then flip to the next page. You can see this will be more, obviously, of your main entrance sign, be very prominent. We're looking at about, we just took measurements of the size of the revenue. We'll adjust this to be about eighteen feet in width. And it's roughly eight feet in height, so it'll give you that visibility that you need. Additionally, you can see the silhouettes are running persons about six feet tall. So, coming into your city proper, these will be very prominent. You will know you're entering the city of Perry. If you go ahead and flip along. Here are your wayfinding signs, there's three of them or five, I think. As I was pointing out here, you have your Board of Education, Public Library, maybe not there. You want to direct people to that were visiting, coming from the fairgrounds. Additionally, this is a big one right here. It's a little blurry on this photo, but your wayfinding arrows here are actually pointing down, which is telling you that you're going the wrong way, pretty much. This is not a proper wayfinding procedure here, so... We have addressed this as well. You can flip to the next slide. As you can see, silhouette here, six feet tall. These will be your directionals. These will be your main directionals. This right here will be your long Perry Parkway. These will be much larger, very prominent. You can see that obviously you're traversing at a higher rate of speed. So, we kind of highlight some letters. This is all entered by every T C D background. So, if the fonts not fine or does not look like what's in your brand standards, it's not. It has to be every T C background. So, there's a Perry Parkway. And then, if you have additional message, we can fill in one panel. You can move to the two-panel option. And down there at the end, that will be the kiosk that we designed for the downtown wayfinding map that you guys have been working on at some point in time. So, there's three locations that we programmed for downtown where that kiosk would be going. We flip to the next one? Okay, so here, as I should have had up here. Frank Rose's or Bobby Calhoun's sign, but I digress. While you do have some consistencies with some of your park signs, you do have some inconsistencies with the messaging. As you can see here, you have the actual hours here or posted on the side, whereas it could be parked and not. So, we tried to address that as well. If you flip to the next slide. This will be your new park signs. Symbol, you can tell we put in a more fluid type. I don't know if that one's true, but it's going to resemble more the polls of you in downtown. That's your right understanding of park sign. Go ahead, next slide. As far as design and development goes, touching on where we started to where we brought it to. We presented, I think we started off, we were a little off-base in our designs. We might have been a little bit too modern for you all. But over the course of the process, we've had about six concepts, maybe a little more if there's variations between some of the concepts. We finally decided on some of the design concepts that you have seen in the previous slides. But where we got that from was obviously your new brand standards. We implemented that along with architectural influences we took from downtown. Forests, streets, capes, though. Through the poles, your brick sidewalks, things like that. So, the purpose of this whole wayfinding package process, which you gave us to do, is to come up with a cohesive sign family that will welcome you into the city of Perry, that will help you traverse throughout the city of Perry in hopes of giving to those people who might not be from an area, want to come back, want to stay with you, want to shop downtown. It should also help with the traversing of your constituents around the city as well. Now, as far as the wayfinding plan goes, this is the start. We have two maps that we started with. We color-coded various sections or quadrants of Perry. What we did here, this kind of provides you with the breadth of the field. So, if you picked out any sign, we would have a message on it, plenty of arrows directing to, whether it's downtown, the hospital, the fairgrounds. All that's laid out. All of these signs correlate to a sign type and two messages associated with that. We sat down with Robert for about four and a half hours. We reviewed each sign, what each message says, and kind of hoped we could just start at one point, follow the sign path to its destination if we wanted to. We flip to the next slide. Same thing downtown. We just zoomed in a little bit because the outline city map was a little too far out for us to get an accurate location plan. But as you can see, it's the same type of deal downtown. But I color-coded these. The blue signs are if you should traverse in the east and west. And the pink ones are if you should traverse in north and south. Let's flip to the next one. And this brings us to implementing. We're now in the process where we're starting to get into CDs for these signs. CDs from the gateways, we're just taking measurements of those. Your wayfinding signs, everything like that. Your cost analysis and construction administration. So, everything that we have put together on this pass through with Robert, yourselves, the means we had as far as this design and development goes, has all led to this point where we're starting to implement the sign package that we have designed, programmed. Implementation goes, but when you flip to the next slide, part of the implementation is now your cost analysis. And as far as your cost analysis goes, this is everything included. As far as implementing goes, we're discussing with Robert about phasing this over the course of the next, or maybe here soon, all we'd like to do so, whether it's one, two, three, four years. So, the implementation is based on how you all would like to see this put in, what budget you have available to use this year, what you might allocate next year, along those lines. Once we get a budget, we can then piece together how to attack implementing, what portions of the sign package get installed when. It would be our recommendation, the first phase or implementation of the signage program. We include your main monument signs, your entrance signs, so letting you know that you're entering Perry city limits. But as far as the rest of your signage package goes and implementation of that, that depends on what destinations you'd like to see on your directional signs. First, second, third, however you want to break it up. And obviously, it's all depending on the budget you have allocated per year, per six.
Just to expand upon that a little bit more, sorry, Anthony. But as you can see, kind of going down through this, there's an estimated low bid and then there's an estimated high bid. And the purpose for doing that is because you are going to get bids that are coming in at various different levels, depending on whether or not it's a local contractor or whether it's more a national sign company that would be bidding on the project. So, one of the things that our role is as far as construction and administration goes is we do all the assistance as far as developing specifications of bid forms and everything to assist you with getting it out to bid. So, that way, the bids that come in are all going to be apples to apples. Everybody's going to be bidding on the same package, the same way. And what that does, that gives us a little bit more control of exactly what the final costs are going to be for you. So, that way, you can anticipate, you know, or you can anticipate that there would be limited change orders as the project was implemented through. And one of the things that I did want to point out, and it goes back to what Anthony was saying, our initial recommendation would be to implement the gateways, the primary gateways coming into the city limits. And then, as far as the wayfinding package goes, you're going to see that there's a lot of directionals that have been programmed thus far. I believe there's forty-seven total of one particular sign type. That by itself is a very high price tag that's associated with that. So, splitting that out based on your fiscal budgets is really where our next focus will be. And that's going to be developing a phasing plan that would take into account whatever those fiscal budgets are in order to say, "Okay, well, what are your primary destinations that you really want to advertise, what you really want to get out there, what you really want to assist people in finding and locating?" And those would be the first directionals that would go in. And then, it would kind of expand out beyond that as necessary.
And that's all we have. Do you have any questions for us?
Counsel? Mr. Smith? Anything to add?
Uh, yes, Mayor. You know, I would be remiss if I didn't, you know, say that I felt very strongly about product that KMA has presented to us tonight. A lot of effort, a lot of time, a lot of thought has gone into this system. And as the guys mentioned, you know, it's very comprehensive. You know, I know it's a significant investment and it's something that we're going to need to think about. And I'd like some guidance from you all in regards to moving this thing forward. So, you know, we have the system completed, the messaging schedule completed. Again, I think it's a very solid product. But again, it's a significant investment. So, guidance from you all and the city manager, I think would be most beneficial in moving this forward. And, you know, how are we going to phase this in? What are y'all's priorities as the elected officials here in the city? You know, the city manager, what does he recommend in regards to funding purposefully or all this type of stuff? And, you know, if we could do that, we could talk about it now. You know, we could let you all think about it, talk about it in a later work session. However you all are perceived, I just don't want this thing to drag on any longer than it already has. You know, we got the three signs going on here at City Hall, Perry Public Safety Complex, and then at the Animal Patrol Facility. Those are going to be moving forward here very shortly. I mean, they're going to look great. And I think something too that you kind of, I guess, already understand is this is going to help, this is going to help build our brand. It's going to help endear the community, to our citizens and the visitors. And it's just really going to replace a woefully inadequate wayfinding system that we currently have in place. I also think too, it's important to mention that the signs that are presented from the guys tonight, very low maintenance, they have a very long lifespan. You know, because all the signs that currently have a place are reaching the end of their useful life. So, it's something that we need to be forward with. It's just a matter of what do you all want to do moving forward.
That's a good point, which you made there. In our specifications that we put out or will send out to you, Robert, no matter what the... And we had done this, we had to this, done that. For the signs that are currently being fabricated, we have a warranty that's V S. The fabricator provide warranty for five years on all non-electronic prices.
But the physical lifespan of these signs should be within fifteen years.
Much longer.
As far as the materials and the finishes that we have specified.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gilmore, you prepared to talk about this tonight? Or would you like for us to take this under advisement?
I suggest you take it under advisement at one point.
Well, that's the high end.
That's all right.
We'll take it under advisement and then we'll have it on our next work session. Please, sir. Mr. Smith, if you'll get the bureaus, wherever they may be at the city, and print out as large as you can get a map of the city. And then, at least locate the entrance signs and some of the others. They've got it in here. I saw that. We can get some of those maybe printed out and blown up so we can identify where we're talking about. And that'll, I think that'll help us focus what direction we want to go to first and attempt to phase it. Is that a favorable counsel? And if we'll go from that standpoint?
Take their maps. And if they're not too busy, print them out as hard as you can on that. And we'll look at it the next time we need it.
And if you want anything specific, for example, which you just alluded to, you just want to see gateways and secondary entrance signs? We could do that for you. We could take that map that we have, that Robert, if you could go back a couple slides, for all those locations where we could have one of our...
Design.
So, you could just see the signs that you're alluding to. So, one more back. This is one that would have one of your entrance signs. These guys up here, you know, this one right here. But yes, we could take out a little busy stuff and just leave you with the specific sign types that you're looking for, that you'd like to see.
And I was trying to give us to a point for phasing. And to me, the obvious starting point would be the gateway entrance signs. And then, they'd move inward or outward, however you want to look at it from there. The more important, that's not a good word. The more prominent directional signs, maybe, or something like that. And we can go from that, but I appreciate y'all's help. I appreciate your presentation, your experience with this. Your script.
Anything else in regards to this, that is a big ask?
Thank you very much. Counsel?
Very good, counsel.
Very thorough, I want to go. I stand with you. Counsel, with your cormorants, we have had a individual wish to address counsel and you would allow us to modify our agenda for tonight. Is Mr. Kelly here?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly? Oh, where's your wish?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Counsel, Joseph Kelly, run a small nonprofit in Warner Robins, Georgia. Two night productions. I recently did the campaign videos for Mayor Tom's, Jim Taylor, Terry Murray in recent elections. My nonprofit's primary focus is on law enforcement, community relations. I've been producing over the last week and a half a Merry Christmas slash Thank You video to the law enforcement community from the middle Georgia community. So far, we've got twenty-seven participants, including mayors, senators, congressmen, city council members, business leaders, church leaders. And I'd like to invite the council and the mayor to join me in this message. I'd need three to five seconds of a lot of you standing in front of my camera saying Merry Christmas and Thank You, or something along those lines. If you want to request.
Is there a cost?
No, sir. I'm covering all the expense.
And your target audience would be?
Law enforcement community.
Local law enforcement community?
Local law enforcement and beyond. We're, it's from middle Georgia to everybody. We've got Senator Kennedy up in Macon. We've got our representative Hatchet out in Dublin. So, we're getting messaging from as broad as I can as far as middle Georgia. So far, I think twenty-six or twenty-seven participants. Mayor and council here would make it twenty-eight. And the opening message will be delivered by Mayor Tom's and a couple other business leaders. And it's, "Residents of middle Georgia would like to thank the men and women of law enforcement and their families. These members of our community sacrifice so much of their lives for our safety and it doesn't go unnoticed. We hope all of you have a safe and Merry Christmas." And that's twenty seconds, eighteen to twenty seconds of the video. And then, the next minute and a half to two minutes would be everybody's thank yous and Merry Christmas. I mean, not everybody's saying thank you, not everybody's saying Merry Christmas, but there's saying some variation there.
Counsel?
I have no objection.
Mr. Hahn? Mr. Jackson, yeah? Mr. Hunt?
Uh, we're currently playing the ball.
Okay.
Does this have any religious overtures?
No, sir. I've, we've got a rabbi. We've got three Christian leaders. I'm hoping to include the Muslim community, but so far, I haven't had any feedback from the Muslim community about joining. It's nonpartisan, non-denomination. It's just a Merry Christmas and a Thank You. I'm not sure what the rabbi is going to say. I don't know if he's going to wish, he believes in Jesus, he says. So, I don't know if he's going to be saying Merry Christmas or if he's going to be saying whatever message that he's addressing to the communities.
Mr. Michael Brooks? I think it's consensus is to move forward on an individual basis. This isn't, if each individual member of council wishes not to participate, that's fine. What's your timeframe?
I'm hoping to have all the filming done by next Sunday. Ideally, it started out by next Friday, this coming Friday. But there's some other people that are now out of town. There's a good contingent of representatives from middle Georgia in DC and Washington this week. So, I pushed it out to next Sunday. I'm hoping to have the video, it's going to be shared broadly through social media. Everybody's, like, Southside Baptist Church will put it out through their social media channels. I'll push it out through mine. The council can push it out through there. So, everybody will just be sharing it with their followers. I've spoken briefly with thirteen and they're going to cover the story once I've got the video produced. So, my goal is finish with production by the fifteenth of December and start sharing it through social media fifteenth through the tenth. I plan on spending a thousand dollars out of my pocket to make sure it hits as many people as possible through advertising. I just want to let the law enforcement know that middle Georgia is... Is it?
You've got our support. Please contact Mr. Gilmore.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Mr. Gilmore, tomorrow, you know, come by and make an appointment for sometime this week?
Sure. I think if you're scared, you're allowed, is your best time, would it be here at five o'clock? Because that's when they're all back together.
That's our next, that's our next meeting.
I believe I have to be at, let me just double check. I might be able to make that happen. I think I met Warner Robins Council at five tomorrow. No, I'm not. Senator Bill, City Hall at six forty-five, so I can be here at five tomorrow. That'll work, everybody?
I'll get most of it.
I'll stay. Thank you very much and you guys have a great day.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Counsel. Item three, B, is that under administration. Three B one is to establish the council's twenty-eighteen meeting calendar. We have provided before you all of the proposed meeting dates for twenty-eighteen. Of course, the first one is January first, which is New Year's Day.
Well, what kind of way to start off the meeting, Mayor?
Well, you'll be by yourself. Is there, first of all, is there any specific date on that list that you've been providing? Most of them are Mondays. January first, January fifteenth, February nineteenth, I don't know about September third. That's later dates. From that standpoint, do you see anything that would preclude us from meeting on the dates specified other than the, what I'm going to call official holidays, those four days that are presented and read? Mr. Gilmore, is there anything specific that you need to bring to our attention other than those four holidays? Is it consensus of counsel then to meet on the dates scheduled that are shown here for twenty-eighteen, calendar year twenty-eighteen? With the exception of those holidays, we would not meet. January one, January fifteenth, February nineteenth, and September thirteenth.
Are those first and third Monday and Tuesday?
Yes. They are. Okay? With counsel's consensus, this, we will informally adopt this as our calendar and get this warrant to make a note of. And we will move forward. And if there's any adjustments that we need to make, as we have done in the past, we can obviously have a discussion in one of these meetings and then either move a meeting or create a meeting accordingly. Okay, with counsel?
Good.
Very good. Thank you all very much. Item three B two is from the Georgia Department of Revenue inquiry on the complementary alcohol issue. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Counsel, it's your last work session, I believe it was. We had... We had talked about the number of... Or trend with businesses that are serving alcohol to their customers that are not a normal outlet. For example, hair salon serves some wine while you're having your haircut or whatever the case may be. And administratively, we had advised you that possibly you might want to consider a special license if some type of special license were required. And then we see what the state would do. Remember, we had that discussion? So in your... On your board pack is the response from the city attorney's office based on their review. At least as I understand it, I think we don't need to do anything as long as whatever the business is doing is just providing it to everyone with no service tied with that threat.
Yes. As long as their money's law.
And it's incumbent upon the business distributing this, for lack of a better term, to ensure that the recipients are at least twenty-one years of age.
So what I would recommend to council is that we send a notice out to all our businesses, just advising that this is what the current regulations are, and then we just leave it at that.
For the city?
For the city. Well, we'll tell them what Department of Revenue's position is, too. You know, based on the city attorney's vote. There is one thing I want to point out, though, is at least as I understand it, they could not do this for birthday parties or any of that type of stuff. In other words, for specific, particular events. Everybody with me on that? It has to be just a general broad deal. If you get anything else, then you're going to have to have a license.
It was a special events license, and that's one from the Department of Revenue that's not the state law. And we also have a special events license as well for those. So they would be required to get both of those. If in fact they were doing something.
Now, I anticipate or plan that the city will go and police any of this type of stuff. I just think of this as a PR from the city advising its businesses, this is what the current situation is. Coincidentally, after we had talked with you, Robert and I went to a seminar sponsored by the Georgia Chamber of Commerce relative to rural prosperity. This is one of the issues that they were talking about, businesses changing what they try to do, bringing customers into the town. Once again, Mayor and Counsel, you're on the page.
I have to admit to counsel, I'm surprised because I did not think that this was the current law. And I was fairly adamant that the state wouldn't allow it. So I sit corrected. Please forgive.
Okay. Maybe, of course, we'd have to.
I was wrong.
No, I don't think so. Because remember, we went around this on one of the businesses over the seven hundred block, and we got a different story.
Yes.
You know, on that. So... But this is what the indication is. Matthew did a very good job discussing everything with Department of Revenue, so that's what we would go with, if you all are agreeing with that.
Consensus to move forward, Counsel?
Yes. We've had a number of businesses that want to do that. Because we've gotten calls and much like yourself, giving them the advice you need to talk to the Department of Revenue because everything I've read says you can't deliver or what, or alcohol. So it's a change.
Mr. King? So you're going to start serving wine in church?
No. My question is that if there's going to be a pilot for limitation, I can drink all I want.
That that's going to be up to the whomever, the person giving it away. Okay. It's going to be up to them.
I guess, kind of like I was concerned because, you know, you probably haven't drank your drink, so you get to a point where I can't consume enough. Because that was my concern, is that if we go back to the business owner, he has to be the one that... I think that's what we're looking at, right, Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
He has to be the one that...
And that would also be in our notice, too. They are liable for whatever they have. That applies even to my house.
That's first. You're right. Okay, that's all that. I'm good.
Okay. Anything further? Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Item three B three is the status of logging operations for street restrictions. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Counsel, also at your last work session, we had talked about a request to use one of the city streets for logging operation. You all had expressed a number of concerns relative to the impact on that street and the city's cost. Took a look at different options, for example, requiring a letter of credit. However, the final result was we have requested the city attorney's office to research it. We have a copy of the city attorney's response on that, and I will let the city attorney address.
Well, as you see in the letter, the short answer to as far as whether you can restrict these logging trucks moving to the streets is no. There are pretty strict, carved-out exceptions for logging trucks in state law, where traditionally, or not traditionally, but broadly speaking, the city can restrict and regulate its city street system. But there is a specific exception when dealing with those who are intending to harvest or haul timber around. And it limits the amount of the letter of credit you can require from those trucks to five thousand dollars. But it is a specific exception just for that one industry.
There's a weight limit, too.
There is a weight limit, but that there's an exception for the weight limit that says if these trucks are traveling to their destination, and this is the only way they can get to that destination, whether it's for pickup or drop-off, then that exception does not apply. I mean, what about if that restriction does not apply?
So they can just tear up our streets, you know, residential area, and there's nothing we can do about it.
Nothing... Well, I won't say nothing, but there's not a whole lot you can do about it on the front end. But certainly, if they take an action that's tearing up the streets, I believe the city got cause of action against those trucks for damage caused.
In the case that we talked about last week... What did you put the full lessons on? Whether it come in writing or labor killing, eighteen wheels, and coming out with a load of log that weighs over eighty-five to ninety thousand pounds. And that's all they can do about it. At the time.
Not to prevent it. Except requiring that letter of credit.
When you go around different towns and you see trucks go hitting, no eighteen wheels or twenty years, how do they get away with that?
Well, I assume, and I don't know where these other towns are booked, but I assume except, or that restriction does not apply to logging industry. And this is a new law, too, within the past couple of years that have been passed. It's pretty strong in favor of timber logging.
Did they have to get that for it?
It doesn't matter. It's in the law.
It's in the law, but you sure as a...
Anything else? Mr. Gilmore, my suggestion would be, based on the information we received from the city attorney, that we respond accordingly to the request and tell them that if they choose that route, then we're not going to stop them from using it.
We have some representatives here if they wish to say anything.
Jim? I didn't realize that. I'm sorry. Please, Mr. Gilmore? If you want to.
This is Mayor, Member, Counsel. Appreciate the opportunity. I'm Walker Rivers. I'm a consulting forester.
Yes.
And my client, Bob Blackwell, who owns that property.
Okay.
And he hired me to look after organizing the timber sale and managing it. So that's my part in the scheme. And our logger is not here.
I call it a scheme.
Jack Walker, Walker Forest Resources, was the logging crew. We chose to cut the wood based on price and reputation. So we... I had asked back, this is last time, when we first started this process, and it was developed the city steam power that I had talked to. And he was concerned about a couple of sewer manholes that buck around, check pipe, make sure the pipe is deep enough for truck to cross it. He said, you probably have to just rattle down at the end. But the... It was understanding that the entire piece of property before it was a subdivision, was a one farm, one single tree. A clear part of it built houses, but the economy went, you know, going south. So the idea of developing phase two was put on the back burner. So Mr. Blackwell ended up with the property, and I think, you know, as time goes by, that's going to happen. So the trees that are... When I set to make room for the first few houses, they're going to have to be cut at some point in the second design. And what we're doing is, I guess you'd call it a heavy real estate cut. We're leaving thirty or forty trees per acre. It's a lot of trees left, so it's an attractive forested piece of land, with most of the timber out of the way now. Any other operation would probably be a lot by lot clearing, now that it's over. On the south side of the pond, it's sort of a physical barrier. We're restricted by EPA and forestry and all sorts of ways about getting anywhere near creeks and crossing creeks and everything. So we have seventeen acres of trees that have to come out. Absolutely have to come out on that side. And it's only about thirty-five acres of wood. It's not huge enough wood. I was concerned with... I've never read the research. I just rely on the General Assembly, the general laws of the day. Me as one of the citizens of the state, but I did some call around today. Concrete truck weighs, according to the guys that I called it, maybe sixty-four, sixty-five thousand pounds, four. It's got two axes. So there's thirty thousand plus pounds per axle. And a logging truck's got four axle, and then it's eighty-five thousand. So it's got fifty percent less weight per axle than we got twenty thousand pounds per axle. So as far as damage to the road, if they have a straight shot, they're rolling, and it's going to be, it's going to be minimal. If a concrete truck pulled into that neighborhood and somebody hired a contractor to build a swimming pool, they're going to be a lot more wear and tear on that road for that operation. And if they develop a back axle subdivision, there's going to be all sorts of heavy trucks, all and all sorts of things, lumber, rock, stone, dirt, you know, whatever, that are going to come up and down. So I've worked around and not in areas, and I didn't know in large cities, logging operations that are perfectly interested in those areas. I've never seen it on any jobs. I worked the problem, the people coming in and out, the subdivision others, as long as I'm careful and slowly. Mr. Walker, the logger that we have, he's a very conscientious individual, and he might be able to sneak those loads out, and does not have any loads to sneak out, you know, through the neighborhood and, you know, hopefully get through them, be able to tell it's fair. Now, we're concerned about wanting to do it. I wanted to reassure y'all of it. More than just a wild logger out there tearing the place up. It's a group of professionals that are trying to get, you know, Mr. Blackwell's would cut to the market, get the property in proper condition for it to be developed and add more money to that place to the city, I suppose. Thank you for the opportunity, Counsel.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, I just had, you know, a couple of years ago, we wanted to... You know, this big boulevard is planned to go all the way over to the other main road, and we wanted to try to... We're restricted to have all the houses up front that boulevard. Part of the original zoning was rear access, which is kind of awful, honestly. And we came before, you know, planning the commission and you guys to try to say, can we get this removed? And we couldn't because, you know, concern was is, you know, this is going to be a major thoroughfare through here. Well, it's not one of the side streets in the subdivision that they're coming through. It's the main boulevard. So that road should be designed for, you know, for a heavier load than, you know, somewhere at the, you know, basic carload. So hopefully, with all, you know, with all, you know, nothing will be damaged and, you know, timber will be pulled out. Hopefully, maybe in the spring, we'll have somebody that'll finally build on the thirteen lots that are up front. And at least it won't be houses, you know, that the timber operation has to come before. There's only six or seven houses on that road now. And hopefully, we'll have thirteen or fourteen more later. But anyways, so we understand your concern and, you know, of the legal end. And obviously, the bond, you know, that sets the whole wear and replacement that it is. But anyways, we appreciate the input.
Thank you, sir. Good luck with your endowment.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilmore, you have anything further you need from us?
From you? Well, we'll be getting a letter from me, primarily advising them that under the circumstances, they can come in and use the road, but if it is damaged, then we'll take legal action against you. The owner, the forester, the timber, the whole crowd.
Whatever the law allows. There is a side street that already has failed pavement there at a manhole, so just taking a note. We didn't cost that.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for Counsel?
Just another clarification. At least based on my observations, to be able one cement truck coming in is not the same as a logger truck on a regular basis coming through. The other thing is when they talk about the developer type of stuff, we require the developer to put up these instruments and this stuff. Everybody with me to see what I mean? Whereas due to the General Assembly, we don't have that option. But unless you have any objections, I would advise them, yes, they can, but if there's any damage or anything, and we will photograph him, but if there's any damage, then we go after them. Because like you all talked about before, while, you know, the street may be designated as a boulevard and everything, it would not be designed to take that kind of truck out.
Not for the bad, whether you might have one where you go down, but this constant use on it would have detrimental effect.
I'd be happy to see a careful, considered logger.
Well, we, if they tore up or cracked it all, would we have legal ground for them to just, or give us the necessary money for that?
Yes. I believe so.
Well, we certainly need to photograph those roads before they start running, if they start running. So we've got to prove that it was in good condition, except the exception, he may just admit the other because I would...
If it even applies to what we just talked about. If it applies even to what we just talked about.
We need to photograph the roads to be sure. You will?
Anything further? Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, item three, for items for viewing and discussion. Is there anything else that needs to come before us at this time?
Okay.
Thank you. Item four, councilmember items.
One question, please, please. The progress on the tennis course.
Any?
Yes. Met with Mr. Dunbar several times and talked with some of his men on the ground. They are thinking the earliest they can do anything is spring, the earliest. Now, they've been out to look at the site. They've got the maps, and they know the elevations to do great work in the field. But they're thinking a spring time from the timeframe that they're, as they can start actually physically doing it.
Last word I heard was they weren't going to do it. They were going to hire private contractors to do it.
I don't know where you heard that. I'm just telling you what I heard from them.
That's what we originally talked, Mr. Hunt, but you talked about the benefit from a cost savings about getting the county involved. And I advised you that there might be a delay with the county, by understanding what you were interested in going ahead. So that was pulled out of the bid, and now the county's doing the basic rock grade footwork. And then once that's done, then we go out with a revised bid for the rest of the work.
Good. That pleases me. If the work doesn't free, it shall be paid.
Nothing's free.
Well, I know that.
Anything else? Mr. King? Mr. Hunter?
I keep getting asked, when are they going to start on the flash pad over, at least filling in the pool?
The bid is currently open. It's been open for the past month. I asked for a two-week extension because I had a couple more contractors that wanted to put in a packet. I've been out on-site with a couple of those individuals that are wanting to put together a quality bid packet. Once we get the bids in, probably I have at least a handful of...
Once we get the bids in, probably gonna have at least, at least a handful of weeks to go over the bids and make your selection as to who you want to do the project. If we get the quality bidders, I'm hoping for at least three, that way we can go ahead and roll. Our target date for having it complete with the timeframe we're working with is the morning of May. Soon as the bid, soon as we decide on who we want to do the job, I'm on, I'm on the go. You're welcome.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Anything else?
Yeah, I was.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yes, Mayor, one item. As a history teacher, most of you know that, a history teacher at this field, I do think it's very important that my students know the history of the country predominantly, and also the history of their city. And one thing they're always excited to discover is that our town, Perry, Georgia, is named in honor of Tom Warburg, who has been Perry in the War of eighteen twelve. After the Battle of Lake Erie, the country was divided at that time over the war and its pros and cons and so forth. And this victory by Tom Warburg Perry at Lake Erie brought the country together at a time when it was divided, and his victory is so inspiring that the founders of our town saw fit to rename our city Perry in his honor. And so, in talks with Mr. Gilmore and Mr. Dye over the past few months, coming to ask council's proposal, or rather, ask for their blessing or proposal, that we have a statue in Tom Warburg Perry's honor as one of our art sculptures that we had said is one of the, part of our master plan in terms of having more art in the city. In discussions with Mr. Dye and Mr. Gilmore, we felt it most appropriate to statue the improve, to put it at our new Crossroads Park as a gateway part into the city. And so I guess I would just like council's blessing to move forward and to see what cost estimates there were, if it is cost effective to hopefully go forward in it.
Do you want to modify the plan of that particular site to include this, based on cost?
Yes. I certainly.
That's the correct, that's the request.
Yes.
Counsel.
Let's, let's add it in and say where it comes. We're not talking about one eighty feet tall, all right?
No, we were making a statue of you, Mayor.
Yeah, it's one of the modern wonders of the world.
No, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
You're doing okay, you got that last part.
I think.
Mr. Walker?
Could not follow up.
Thank you, Mr. Jacksons?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Gilmore?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Holbert?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Out of finalists department head items. Ms. King?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
Mayor and Council, I do have one item I wanted to bring to your attention, and really more of something for you to think about, not to, not necessarily discuss unless you want to. Last Monday at the planning commission meeting, we had, the planning commission denied a request for electronic message board, twelve oh seven Main Street. But the, during that discussion, there was, we kind of looked at what the plans are for Crossroads Park, and landscaping plans and so forth. And the, the reason that was requested for this electronic message board sign is that because of the realignment of the streets, the existing sign is difficult to read. And I think there may be a case from coming into town from the west side or the east side, that that may be a possibility. But when you look at the landscape plans for the park, that existing sign is going to have three shade trees in front of it. So I was just wondering whether or not council would consider allowing a small sign, and I don't know what size, I'm just kind of bringing the concept to you, allowing a small sign for that business at the intersection of that driveway and Main Street. It would end up having to be in the park, but at least it provides some, some visibility. So just something for you to think about, and take a look at the plans, and see if it's something that you consider wanting.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gilmore?
Counselor, you may remember, we talked about this before, this Perry Paraphractic, and my understanding was that you had, not directly authorized, but, if I'm wrong, there had no basic objections because of this heartland thing that they installed a little low sign for their business.
Within the park?
Yes. If on the driveway?
It'd be in the Main Street, curb.
Maybe it didn't, but this was, this wasn't discussed.
I don't think we agreed to it, I think it was a discussion because there was.
Well, what I, what I thought they wanted to do was essentially move their sign, take the one they had down and put another one up at Main Street.
That's what the original request came to you, you always said absolutely not, we're going to do that.
Okay. That's essentially what Mr. Wood's asking us to consider, I think, is it not, or something similar?
Well, certainly not his existing sign.
Right.
But, yeah, something, something small, and again, I don't know, I would think something no more than five feet tall, and I don't know how wide, but something that would give a reasonable identification to the business from what is now their main front edge, which they don't really have anymore.
Is there, are there any other businesses in that strip sign?
Are there?
I think there is.
I wasn't aware. It could be two, but I know there's an embroidery in there, and I think there might be some type of acupuncture or something like that.
Yeah.
But they, they don't have an existing sign, though, for those businesses, is that correct?
I haven't, no, sir.
It's just a very.
Okay. One other thing that I have, I've kind of thought about during the planning commission meeting, and I haven't talked to Dr. Gillis about any of these, but one thing I was kind of looking at is the potential for doing more of a tower element at the corner of that building that's right in front of their, right in front of their entranceway, that would give, I think, a little more visibility to that building. So that may be another option for them to look at rather than this, but just kind of wanted to raise, make, make you aware, you aware that the landscape plan that we're proposing will definitely block his existing sign, so.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Gilmore, will you put that on the, whatever list it is that you do consider?
Whatever, we've discussed connection with some, you know, we have some different sample of that thing. For example, it's my opinion, five feet would be too tall.
Aren't there some guidelines anyway in the downtown development district about signage?
There's some, but this would be in unique circumstances.
This would be allowing, you are.
We don't, the fact that you're putting a couple down, that we're on the city of I right.
But by the same token, we are blocking.
Well, I agree.
When we are, we are blocking his signage, so this would be an exception.
Everything, yes.
Yeah, but the unique, maybe. We'll, we'll have that on the work session for you. Thank you. Senator, head of council. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wood. Chief Lamb?
Nothing to do, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Couple of items, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and Council, on November twenty-fifth, the Main Street Advisory Board and the Perry Downtown Merch Association hosted the annual Small Business Saturday Downtown. It was a rousing success from all accounts. Over a hundred people participated in the passport contest, which is great. There was one lucky winner that won three hundred downtown dollars. So there were a lot of people milling about, lots of success. All the merchants that I spoke into regarding the day said, you know, it was great, a few of them said it was the best day they'd ever had. So again, that's a, a great event, continues to grow year after year. Today, we hosted our friends from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. We had all the regional representatives from around the state, and a couple of folks from Atlanta in town to tour the community and talk about what the city of Perry has done in utilizing the programs and resources that they offer. So it was a great way to spotlight the city. We looked at a number of our target neighborhoods that we're working, some of the housing projects in, we looked at our downtown, we looked at Oliver Place and the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Project up there. We toured the Guardian Centers, which is, you know, always that day, everyone's like, oh, man, it's crazy. They were obviously blown away by that. We toured the Stanley Facility, some of the edge dollars that the state utilizes for deal closing funds, we utilized in that project. So they were able to see a lot of what we were doing and how we've been able to utilize the programs and resources they offer, and facilitating discussion and seeing how other communities might be able to utilize the state's programs. So it was, it was a great day, great visit, you know, they thought what Perry's doing, the direction we're heading in this community was fantastic, and they look forward to working with us again in the future. It's all happening.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Ms. Palmer?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Dye?
She's modest. There was one thing that came out last week, was a, was a really nice story, we didn't expect it, it was one of them out of blue that WMZ did, it was on the news about our trail system and trail networks, and Ellen did a great job by talking, I'll bet she's happy with her phone shop. And the, and the story was.
Which is why I didn't bring it up.
But the story was, was, it had to do with our last meeting when Interfor gave us their dinner stimulation for our trail. So that led to another story, and he happened to come down one day, would see the trucks and everything, were going at our whitetail unit, so it was a nice picture. But it's on social media, you can't actually see it.
Here it is. Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Palmer.
Thanks.
Sorry, I couldn't help myself.
Chief Parker?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor and Council, just one quick thing, I want to advise you that Friday night, we did have a really successful fire truck ride in Santa. We, we had over, about, well, about five hundred and fifty riders riding the truck, and we estimate there could have been as many as two hundred, then looked at the latter truck, once we set it up, and realized the line was too long, and they went ahead and left. But we did take a, an event that was scheduled from six to eight, and we went ahead and went until ten o'clock. All the firefighters were very happy, nobody complained about staying out there until everybody in line got a chance to ride the fire truck with Santa. So it was a very successful event, we're looking forward to doing something very similar next year, but thank you for letting us use City Hall for that event.
I want to thank you and your men and women who have taken on that project and stayed till the end, and did some cleanup, I understand, afterwards, out both outside and inside. Please let the firefighters know that myself and council appreciate your efforts in this community and involvement. It sounds like it was so successful, we might ought to do it again in the future, but I'll let y'all determine that.
Yes, sir.
From that standpoint. Based on the number of children that wanted to ride with Santa, I'm glad that things must be looking up, because their Santa lists must be growing. I get that we're wanting to get them that bad, that's a good thing.
Santa was very busy Friday night.
I can tell. That's a good thing. Thank you, sir. So, do you have anything? I think that's it. We have our meeting tomorrow evening at five for pre-council, six for council meeting. With one exception, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to begin with executive session for the purpose of real estate. Much in the second, and discussion, Mayor Nunn, most elaborate, and here's an announcement. Thank you for your interest and participation.